For tonight's meeting, for members of the public wishing to make a comment, please use the raise hand feature within Zoom to be recognized and unmuted by the meeting host. Once unmuted, please state your full name for the record, followed by your question or comment. If you are listening by phone as an audio-only participant and want to speak, press star nine on your phone to be recognized. The public comment period will provide a time limit of three minutes for each comment. The public comment period and its duration will be at the discretion of the governing body. Once you have spoken, please lower your hand on Zoom. Thank you.
Are we... Longest minute of your life is that one man before the meeting starts? Okay. Close call? Good evening. Welcome to the Wednesday, March 9th, 2022 Committee, the whole meeting. Michael kind of went over everything that for putting your hands up and we're sorry this had to happen, but with the weather and the school district being closed, we felt this was the best second or the next best way to go. Public comment instructions are in the chat and I'm limiting the comments to three minutes. And so we ask that you make your point. Clerk, could you please read the... Read the agenda item?
Number thirteen, ordinance third reading, creating a new section 9.08.120 malicious harassment based on race, color, religion, ancestry, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, national origin, disability, or political affiliation of chapter 9.08 offenses against public peace and decency of Title IX, Public Peace and Welfare of the Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming.
Good. Councilman Johnson, could you do a staff report?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So really there's not been any changes after the amendment at the last committee or excuse me, at the second reading, adding political affiliations at the request of the police department and constituents that have voiced their concerns. Stephanie and I have worked on, in addition to Title IX, basically what we're doing is we're copying and pasting the definition of assault, the definition of harassment, and the definition of batter from state statute instead of incorporating to this specific chapter. It's going to be introduced on Monday night. It was stamped today. And so it will basically cover all of Title IX instead of just this one chapter. So that's really the only add-on is those definitions being added to Chapter IX, which you will see introduced on Monday.
Any further questions from committee to Councilman Johnson? Questions from committee? Yeah. Public comment? If you please use the raised hand function?
Yes. President Royball, I'm going to begin to share my screen so we can get the timer available for everyone to see. And I'm also going to then go to our list of attendees to see raised hands. Looks like we do have one from Ed here initially. Ed, you are on with the governing body. If you'd state your full name for the record, followed by your question or comment. But make sure to unmute yourself first there, Ed. Ed, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Ed Baynisch. I'm representing compassionate Cheyenne and the Wyoming Independent Citizens Coalition. I'm here to speak in favor of the equal rights ordinance. I have enjoyed living in Cheyenne for 48 years. I'm now retired and doing volunteer work to encourage our community to do what's right and compassionate, especially for the marginalized, voiceless, and forgotten in our community. I believe in the basic goodness of every human being. However, sometimes we don't listen to our better angels and we do and say things that deeply hurt others. We can all make a mistake, but when it becomes purposeful, hateful, hurtful, and a pattern, then we all have a problem. When we are mean and deeply hurt others, we sometimes need ordinances or statutes to wake us up, to help keep us in line. I can imagine God saying to Moses on Mount Sinai, "All my people need to do is use common sense and treat each other as they want to be treated." But God continues, "Because humans will be humans, here are ten commandments." Please know that I believe in and support free speech. However, the right to free speech always comes with responsibilities. The basic responsibility to be thoughtful, kind, and compassionate. I know our community is kind and compassionate and I, like many others, strive to encourage Cheyenne to be a more compassionate city. I want to share a quote in closing. One of the things, this is a quote, "One of the things about being kind is that you perk up when you hear other people being unkind, and it makes you sad inside. Kindness sometimes can be just as easy as not being mean to someone, not talking about someone behind the back, or posting that mean comment on social media. That's what kindness can be. It can be just as easy and simple as not being cruel to someone." End quote. These wise words are from Orion Jean, living in Mansfield, Texas. He's an 11-year-old African American. He's also on the cover of the current issue of Time Magazine, magazine as the kid of the year and ambassador of kindness. The Time article highlights 18 other finalists. I think we have much to learn from these kids and so many others like them. I would encourage you to vote yes on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baynisch. Hi, Michael, further public comment?
President Royball, yes. Matt Freeman, go ahead. You're on with the governing body. If you'd state your full name for the record, followed by your comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. My name is Matt Freeman. I reside in Ward Three. And with this not being in person, I guess I'm going to, you know, throw my speech away and start over. So I did think it's interesting. So are we changing the ordinance? Is this a procedural issue? I find that kind of interesting. So something's going to be introduced on Monday for the final vote? So whenever we go down the road of protecting classes, we're always going to have issues. And of course, I was going to, you know, try to be funny in person where I went through and, you know, explained what kind of a protected class we could have. And of course, the absurdity with that. But, you know, here we are. We're still talking about our rights and we're still talking about how those rights get infringed upon when we start making special rights. And so with that being said, I'll just jump to the more serious part of what I was going to say. And that is basically that we were all going to be judged. We might be judged tomorrow. We might be judged in a week from now. You know, it's just hard to say. Now, we're going to get judged by our friends and our coworkers and our family members and our higher power, of course. We're going to get judged by him. And we're going to get judged for what's in our heart and what comes out of our mouth. And we're going to get judged for our behaviors and our reactions. And all this is, you know, pretty much just the way it is. And with that being said, we're all going to get judged for this ordinance at some level as well. And at some point, if nobody else chooses to do a claim in court for this, then I certainly am going to be willing to do that. Hopefully, I won't have to get arrested to do that. But, you know, when we're willing to stand on our morals and our integrity and what's right and for liberty, then, you know, it starts to get a little weird, doesn't it? And so you all have a wonderful evening. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Michael, further public comment?
Yes. Stuart Campbell, you're on with the governing body.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Stuart. Yes.
Okay. Thank you for your time. My name's Stuart Campbell, Ward One. I've spoken out on this issue before, you guys all before. I feel like you guys know where I stand with it. I'm definitely for this. I think you guys should pass it. You know, without getting into theoretical stuff or theological stuff, this ordinance at its basic point is about intentional malicious intent to cause harm to people. I feel like it's common sense that this is a bad thing to say that we're just going to sweep this under the rug. I feel like, you know, to say that we can't treat this issue because we aren't solving the bigger issues of racism, homophobia, and our society that we can't address the smaller, more local things. You know, I work in healthcare. You know, just because we don't have a cure for cancer doesn't mean we don't treat cancer, okay? Just because we don't have a cure for cardiovascular disease doesn't mean we don't treat the cardiovascular disease. We can still manage the bigger issues that are a plague on our community and between our neighbors and our friends and our family. So as you guys continue your conversation about moving this forward, I just hope you guys look at the intent of this ordinance, what it's specifically trying to target. And I also respect that you guys take a look at it if any other ordinances or amendments are brought forward to strip the intent of this ordinance for the purpose and integrity that it's trying to achieve. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michael, further public comment?
Robin, you are now on with the governing body. Just make sure to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
I'm Robin Goodspeed, and I have spoken here before to this council. And by the grace of God and the power of Jesus Christ, I'm one of the many thousands of Christian ex-queers freed from our chosen sinful lives of sexual perversion. I'm speaking as a Cheyenne Ward Three voter and adamantly against this ordinance. I lived as an atheist and as a lesbian for most of 30 years. America chose to remove God from all of its institutions in the 1950s, beginning with schools and government at every level. America's godless, atheist, amoral culture today shows the devastation of our decades-old descent into depravity. As an atheist, I was the center of my own universe, and my self-worship was exhilarating and empowering until it didn't work anymore. There was always an atheist with more power making rules for me that I didn't like. And the atheists with ultimate power make all the rules and enslave everyone under them. This is called tyranny. Also, at the same time, in my chosen lesbian life, I lived and worked for the queer agenda. I was literally a soldier of Sodom. The queer agenda is simple: planet Sodom. And one of the most effective weapons in the LGBTQ arsenal is lawfare, which is the purpose of this ordinance. In the 30 years I chose to live as a godless lesbian, I created and lived in my own hell on earth and was responsible for all the damage that I did to myself and to everyone else around me. When God freed me from my prison of sexual perversion, I was able to see clearly how completely I had been deceived. This ordinance will be used to target, attack, and destroy Christian voices still speaking the truth of God's word and of His Son, Jesus Christ. We Christians will continue to speak God's word and God's truth. I pray that today the members of this council will hear and will understand that you will be held accountable for what you choose to do today. Please vote against this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, further public comment?
Keel, you are now on with the governing body.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
My name is Kyle Bergeron. I've lived in Cheyenne for 10 years now. Not that I think it matters, but I'm a 28-year-old white bisexual male who is also a registered Republican and a Christian. So not sure what the previous comment was about. But anyway, I'm for this ordinance. I think it's a good change in the environment that Wyoming has. And erasing the past that we have, our reputation is not good. It not only protects me, but it seems to protect everybody. So, you know, I get the argument with the Band-Aid and whatever, but we have to start somewhere. So why not here? You know, like, growing up, being different, it's really hard and it's really scary. And for people who haven't ever had to come out to family, friends, and whatever, probably don't understand what it really does. I've lost friends. I've lost family over who I am and what I like. So I would like to create a safe environment for other kids and future generations that I think struggle with it. And I think that this is a good stepping stone for that. I think this should be a state law. But again, we got to start somewhere. 48 other states have this in place. And as far as I know, the world is not on fire over it, maybe over other things, but I don't think it's because of this. And that's all I have to say on the matter.
Thank you. Michael, further public comment?
Yes. Amber, you are now on with the governing body.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Amber Laba, and I am with the Greater Cheyenne Chamber of Commerce. And I just wanted to come here this evening and thank you all for your continued support on this ordinance. The Chamber and the Wyoming Retail Association are still in support of this ordinance. And we just would like to continue thanking you for your continued support moving this forward. That is all I have to say tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, further public comment?
Yes, President. Looks like we have public comment from Kathy. Kathy, you are on with the governing body. Just make sure to unmute yourself there, Kathy.
Okay, it's not Kathy. That's the name that came up on it. It's on my computer, so I do apologize. I am Tom Faray, pastor here at Cheyenne. I am a voting citizen, resident here in Cheyenne. And just would like to oppose this ordinance. I am a Hispanic, and I feel like with what is already in place as far as our laws, I feel protected already as a Latino, as a minority. We would enforce the laws that we already have. I feel instituting another ordinance would do more harm than good. It will harm those that have their own opinions and ideas and take them to extreme would provide a legal way for people to harass those that beg to differ with them. I am opposed to it. Once again, minority, I feel safe with the laws that we already have. If you'll only institute them and hold them, hold people accountable to the laws that we have. Thank you for your time. I'd appreciate it if you reconsider your decision and vote no on this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor. Hey, Michael, further public comment?
President Royball, I'm scanning right now, but for the time being, I do not see any other raised hands. Oh, actually, I take that back. Looks like we have a raised hand now from Bob Wilson.
Okay.
Go ahead, Bob.
Okay. Hello, members of the council, and thank you for all these hearings. I was intrigued to hear that there's a major change coming out that would focus in on physical harm. It sounded like assault and battery. And I didn't touch all of the things going on, but a huge improvement that could be made to this would be if you put guardrails on this ordinance so that things that are not physical harm are not punished, punishable under this ordinance. It was troubling to hear last meeting from Councilman Esquibel, his comment that this ordinance could be used to punish people who might say that they would not recommend shopping at somebody's store because they were a Democrat. Or, and I can extend quite easily to because of a Democrat position or perhaps against a Republican position. Those are the sorts of things that people are going to talk about. For the same way that if I go up to a store and the store is flying a Confederate flag outside, I'm probably not going to go in and I'm probably not going to tell, I'm probably going to tell other people that I used to shop at this store, but I talked to the owner and, you know, the owner seems to have some opinions that I do as far as how we can build harmony in our community. The same thing goes for other positions and other flags and other displays. Those are political affiliations. So if you're going to use this ordinance in order to punish people because of those, because speaking up against something like that, that is far from the physical harm that we were led to believe that this ordinance was about when we listened in on the KGB presentation about it, when we heard the, all the justifications in the beginning that this is not about suppressing free speech or differences of opinion. I would ask you to put some guardrails on this ordinance. There was a comment made that about malicious intent to harm people. If we made that malicious intent to physically harm people, then we're good. But the problems arise when differences of opinion are seen as harmful because they're not nice. In a February 13th Cheyenne newspaper article, the columnist claimed that "the sponsor of the bill seeking to preserve women's sports for biological women would lead teens to suicide," that it would be interpreted as producing suicidal problems. The editorial wondered whether some white lawmakers and state officials were starting an avalanche of veiled racism and racist jokes and victim blaming and discrimination and racial profiling and slurs and calls for violence all the way up to mass murder in the comments of the newspaper editorial, I think, the same day, around the same time. These are over the top, and those are the sorts of things that just silence appropriate discussions about the controversial issues of our day. And I hope you will reconsider, and I hope you will get news out immediately about this major change that apparently is forthcoming in the ordinance. Thank you for bearing with me for those few extra seconds.
No worries. Thank you. Michael, any further public comment?
Yes, President. Sam, you are on with the governing body.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We respectfully ask that council remove all of the information citing all of the electronic information portion of this ordinance, as even Facebook is unable to control this. Again, there are no clear boundaries. Then I'm looking at C, "We respectfully ask that the open-ended any message or material be clarified." This seems to be a very open-ended addition. It reads now, "any message or material," quote unquote, "not," end quote unquote, "any message or material which meets the aforementioned criteria." Would council please clarify this prior to approval, since it seems like that's the way it's going? Also on D, "We respectfully ask that the language of excluding costs, fees, and assessments, or et cetera, be changed to including costs, fees, and assessments, or et cetera." Since this is such an important addition to our city government, we ask that you send this message loud and clear with the imposition of the financial responsibility where it lies, not with the offender, not with the people. And also, "We respectfully request that vocation be added to this list of bias provisions listed in this." After political affiliations, there are many occurrences of this issue within the city of Cheyenne, and vocation is a serious bias. And lastly, "The reference to the fines does not meet with the national harassment hate penalties. Please impose an additional 1,000 over the highest imposable fine for the violation referred to in this punishment section 1.24.01 of the city code. Every other state, the reason for this undertaking, we have the last two holdouts, has a seriously higher imposed addition to the punishment portion of their law. We do not see that in this case for Cheyenne's compliance with the nation, as Mr. Johnson is seeking. We need a higher additional penalty for this serious concern. Would council address this crucial overlooked additional national requirement for us prior to signing this proposed ordinance, please? And I do look forward to seeing what you have coming before this gets a fruit. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. Sir Johnson? Councilman Johnson?
I don't have a hand raised.
No, okay. As she was reading through the portions, I could not find any of those on the ordinances. We have it written. Do you have any idea what that's from?
Typically, it would go back into what we have written in Title I, which according to city code, most likely is the $750 fine and/or six months in jail. That's a standard across the board per Title I. What she's referencing is basically at a federal level, which we haven't reached that point yet, is regarding higher fines. I believe under state statute, we are not allowed to exceed that amount of the 750 or six months in jail. And I believe that's per state code.
Okay. Thank you very much. Hey, Michael, any further public comment?
Yes, we do. Dale, you are on with the governing body.
Good evening, Councilman Dale Steenburgen, Greater Cheyenne Chamber of Commerce. Good evening, Councilman Dale Steenburgen, Greater Cheyenne Chamber of Commerce. First, I'd just like to thank you for your continued support of this. It's important for our city, it's important to show a leadership position for our state. Like to share a couple numbers with you. One of them is 48. Forty-eight other states that have passed this, or some version of it, a lot of states, a lot more tough than this one. And all, in all of those states, it has not had any political problems. They haven't burnt down, hasn't, hasn't ruined the state. As a matter of fact, I would tell you my second number, and that second number is 50th. And 50th is the number in economic development that we are across the United States. Because businesses across this country, folks, are paying attention to their social obligations. And this is a social obligation to make sure that people are safe, they feel comfortable, and they are not threatened, whether that be by action or that be by what they write, or that be what, what they put out on social media, et cetera. We know this. We encourage our schools in this state to monitor for bullying in all these formats. So, you know, I just remind you that we, we, we live in a wonderful state. But if we don't take steps to ensure that that continues, we will see it threatened, and our, and our culture will change. And I certainly think that we want to make sure that we put ourselves in a good place as we move into the future. So thank you for supporting this. I look forward to its passage. I know that our business community looks forward to its passage. Our people of color look forward to their, its passage. People of different religions look forward to its passage. You know, I've heard a lot about my faith brought up during this, and what I would say is, is that if you read into the Bible a little bit, you know, God was pretty accepting of all folks, right? Not just the Jews, also the Gentiles. And regardless of what our beliefs might be, we should be compassionate and loving and emotionally supportive of everyone in our communities. That is what will make us great. Thank you.
Steve Steenburgen? Michael, further public comment? Steve, you are on with the governing body. If you just make sure to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, my name is Steve Amelia, I'm Cheyenne resident here. And I really don't necessarily have anything, shall we say, against this proposal, except that we have, I emailed to all of you last time, four pages of city, county, state, and school policies, ordinances, et cetera, that deal with all of these things. And if we're not using them, why are we going to put another tool in the toolbox? Is it going to be just for, we've got a problem that we perceive, we're going to say, hey, we're going to pass this law, okay? And then another law, along with all the other four pages, would just gather dust. We need to use what we have. Now, the other question that I have, or statement, is who is painting Wyoming as such an incredibly hateful and bigoted state? The Chamber of Commerce are saying that, oh, businesses are afraid to come here. I mean, I don't really see people, you know, riding in on their horses and going up to the different businesses and roping people and dragging them out and hanging them in the street, and, you know, it's not happening. We've had other businesses come in here relocate because it's a very business-friendly state. So who is painting us? Why are they painting us as such a horrible, horrible state that hates everybody? That we're a bunch of crazy rednecks? That is not true. I've lived in eight different states. All the other states are just like we are. And then someone from the Chamber of Commerce had said, well, this is a good first step. Well, what's the second, third, fourth, fifth step? Is there a political agenda here? I wouldn't say that we are the, a holdout. I think everybody else is, could be a lemming, just running off the cliff as far as trying to get these hate crimes in here. As a veteran, I know that if you burn the American flag, that's protected speech. Well, I would say that's the hate crime. If I burned a rainbow flag, that's not free speech, that's a hate crime. Why the difference there? When I see people burn the American flag, that really irritates me because I'm going, that is hate speech. Would the burning of the American flag, would that be covered underneath here that someone couldn't do that? And/or if someone burned a rainbow flag, would that be considered free speech? So there are some things that I think that we don't necessarily need this. We would just need to use what we have. And let's not paint Wyoming as some backwards hick town, redneck, bigoted, hateful state because we will certainly are not, this is one of the nicest states that I've ever lived in, and I really don't want to go anyplace else, or appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Michael, further public comment? President Royball, it looks like we do have one hand raised, but I believe it's from an individual who's already spoke, so I don't know how you wish to proceed. If we have no one else, I'll allow one, one more. Okay. Sam, you are back on with the governing body.
Thank you, I'd like to use my last 15 seconds that I didn't before. We're requesting that, and this was the most important, I'm so sorry, that you add to this malicious harassment based on add all bias, including race, color, religion, ancestry. That way, it just feels like everybody's included then. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, any further public comment? President Royball, yes, we do. Sean, you are on with the governing body.
Yes, just wanted to quickly just point out a few things. Some of these I sent in an email at a previous time, but just to give you a reminder. Sorry, my name is Sean Sales from here in Cheyenne.
Thank you.
So what I'd like to say is this, is number one, the idea that this is being used in other states is not entirely true, because I couldn't find any other straight state that uses the language gender expression. And only 16 states use gender identity, which, both of which go beyond the federal level as well. There's not one federal level that uses gender expression. So this is actually going farther than any other states. Number two, the idea that businesses aren't coming to Cheyenne because of this is easily self-defeated as you just look at the businesses that are coming to town. We see them all the time. There's businesses waiting to get to Cheyenne. It's, it's not this dire thing. The second or third thing I'd like to point out is this idea that the city is racist hasn't really come from people, it's actually coming from the people who should be supporting the city. When the commander out at the F.E. Warren gives an article to the local paper and to the Air Force Times, and the title of those things are Cheyenne's a racist city, but there's no mention of the actual business that refused service so that we could actually shine light onto somebody who might actually be the problem, but instead we're going to name everybody? That's where the issue is, when the Chamber of Commerce comes on and repeatedly is agreeing with the side that's an idea that somehow we're this terrible racist town, and he's basically lining us up in his previous comments, the meeting before, as being similar to slave owners and those who are against ending slavery. I mean, these are the kinds of things, it's a communication issue, it's a communication problem that we're hearing from those who are supposed to be leading. Then when we look at the actual ordinance, it actually doesn't address any of the problems that have been listed in any of these articles. This wouldn't do anything for a business that doesn't sell. This wouldn't do anything to end bad use of language in schools. This doesn't do anything, it's just a nice show for a moment, but it doesn't actually accomplish any of the goals. If you think that a $750 fine will end racism, sign me up. I'll sponsor a racist today, I'll pay the $750 myself to change their mind. But that's not how it works. What you have to do is you have to shine light on where the actual problem is. So name those businesses, just like a few months back when we had a business that was selling a offensive t-shirt. All you did was you put the name in the, of the business in the paper. A week later, you've got an apology from the business. The t-shirt's no longer sold. This is just a show. This doesn't really mean anything, it doesn't accomplish any of the set goals that are going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Michael, any further public comment? President Royball, I am not seeing any raised hands at this time. Okay, thank you. Okay, I have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve on second, or excuse me, I guess, I move to approve.
Second, Councilman Cook.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from committee?
Mr. President, Councilman Escobal.
Councilman Escobal.
The only comment I'm going to make is when there was something said about transmitted and telephonic, computerized and electronic messages, when malicious harassment happens electronically, the evidence is right there. So if a complaint is made to the police department, they're able to track that, and at that point would probably contact the person that made that transmission and just tell them to stop. You know, if they continue that type of harassment, like I said, there's an electronic path there that leads right back to the person that did it. It's a little bit different than maybe one that happens out in the streets or in an establishment. So that one is actually even better, I think, so. That's the only comment.
Thank you, Councilman Escobal. Dr. Aldridge?
Thank you, President Royball, through you. I just wanted to say first and foremost that I appreciate everybody who has engaged on this topic through all three of the readings of this proposed ordinance and through the two council meetings. I, I really do believe that this is democracy at its best. I really appreciate the courtesy and the respectfulness that people have been able to bring to this conversation. I did want to say in visiting, in addressing something that Stuart Campbell said was that I agree that when you have a disease or a cancer like this, that you want to make sure that it's not something that's swept under the rug, that you want to make sure that it's addressed. I guess my thought on that is that this is, while this disease or this cancerous behavior that has, continues to be described to us is, you know, dealt with as a community, I think what we disagree on is the treatment. Where one doctor might recommend chemotherapy, one doctor might recommend surgery. I want to make sure that, my biggest concern is that this council will pat themselves on the back and say, gosh, we did a great job and a great thing by addressing this, and walk off. And that is not going to solve the issue. It is going to take a courageous conversation, it's going to take building relationships, and it's going to take hard work and letting the community know and letting people outside of our community know that this is not who we are, this is not what we represent. And so my challenge to all of my fellow councilmen would be, let's make sure that we don't walk away with this window dressing, that we actually go on to do the hard and laborious task of continuing the conversation. So I appreciate everyone's input and, you know, and weighing in on this subject, but there's still work to be done, and I just don't believe that this ordinance is the way that that's going to be achieved.
Thank you, Dr. Aldridge. Any further comments or questions from committee? Comments or questions? Hearing done. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
And then Dr. Aldridge is a no. Okay, the recommendation for the committee as a whole will be to approve on third reading at the next meeting of the governing body. And having no further business for the committee as a whole, we are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.